Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a call? One?
We do have a call.
Okay. Well, folks, it's three o'clock. Three o'clock. Gloria? Gloria? Gloria, class is starting. We'll have a detention later. Well, it's still three o'clock, so we're on time. And welcome to the November board meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. Could you call the roll, please?
Certainly will. Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Eisbach?
Present.
Mr. Moss?
Present.
Ms. Tucker? Mr. Castleman? Mr. Seifert? And Ms. Shaminoff, present. So we have four out of seven.
Four present, three absent. We have a quorum, so entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as distributed.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
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 And opposed by nay, and it passes. Unless there are objections, I'll group the approval of the minutes together, requesting a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee, October 25th of 2022, the minutes of the regular session, October 7th, 2022, the executive session of October 27th, 2022, and the minutes of approval of claims, November 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Thank you. David, the financial report for October.
Thank you, Ben. I'll make this quick, because we kind of want to go through the later parts of the session. Really, just one line to report on that's gone off budget, Mark, and that is consulting expense. The reason for that is we are changing out our Wi-Fi network, and so Network Solutions, our consultants, doing all of their work as far as replacing all of the Wi-Fi points, the access points throughout the system. And so our IT group has not been able to do all of that. So we've hired them. There's an $18,000 cost on that. And so the line itself only has $25,000 budget in place. It's taking that line into the red. So we'll have to move some money in there at year end. But that's the only other line that has come up going over budget. The news to report, I guess I've been here long enough to see this happen. We got our budget order yesterday, and it was, or we got it last Friday. It was sent in and approved. This is the first time it's been this early. Usually, we're fighting, the state actually passed a law that said they had to get it by the end of the year, because it used to be like February 15th, and you're like, okay, you're operating for six months without really an approved budget on your hands. But it came in, we are complete, everything was correct, except I, our property taxes are, came in actually, one, $1,477 higher than my estimate on a $28 million sub. I'll try to do better next year.
David, you're darn good.
But no, that was in there. Again, no other things to report on at this point, because we've got a lot to discuss with the compensation and benefit items that are on the agenda later. But I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, folks? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved. Second?
Second. Any questions? Comments? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Our approval of claims, are you all for about three cents on that?
Yeah, boy, I tell you, just a bit. You know, at first, I was going to say the highest claim was $50,000, but then I said, no, I'll do the, it's exactly $49,984. That's the highest claim this time. And that is for Microsoft, for our licenses for next year. And then the next one is right below it, $48,147. That's for our electrical service. So those are the two highest claims on this claim register.
Any questions on the claims? Not motion to approve the claims as distributed?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Comments? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? They are coming around. Okay, we now get to the meaty part of the program. The approval of the 2023 Compensation and Benefits Program.
If I sit here, or should I go stand? What would you prefer?
Have difficulty, maybe better over there.
Okay. Before I start, I want to do a brief introduction for you all. Vivian Bradley, who's sitting right over here next to Kim, is our security supervisor for First Shift. She actually started a couple weeks ago, and she's not new to ACPL. She's been here for 18 years as a security officer, security supervisor, and then the control center operator. So we're really excited and happy to have her as our First Shift supervisor. All right. So I thought I would start with benefits, and I have Frank here if we, if I can't answer anything for you all. But for our benefit plans, we plan on maintaining the same plans that we had last year, so the traditional, the high deductible, and then the narrow networks for both of those as well. We've been lucky to not have to raise employee premiums over the past three years. In 2023, there will be a slight increase in those premiums to keep our plan competitive for staff, but also staying realistic to the rise in healthcare costs that we've experienced. You can see the 2022 premiums versus the 2023 premiums in your packet, and we talked about that in FNP meeting last month. We're currently staying with Express Scripps for our pharmacy benefit manager, but we will look the first quarter at other possible vendors for changes then. We're proposing to discontinue Calladoc based on low employee usage, but increase our communication to staff that most of our, most of their primary physicians offer virtual visits, and they can create good RX accounts to save on prescription costs. So we're going to increase our communication to staff around both of those. The HSA limits increase in 2023, and we're going to increase our portion as well. The ACPL employee-only portion will go up to 1310 a year. That's up from 1250 last year. And the ACPL family contribution will go up to 2630, which is up from 2500 last year. Guardian and dental will stay the same. We'll still have the spousal carve-out, so if spouses are eligible for benefits through their employer, they won't be able to be covered by ACPL. We currently, excuse me, have 43 spouses enrolled in our medical plan. And then we'll also keep the tobacco premiums for staff. Any questions about those pieces? Going hand-in-hand with our benefits are our wellness benefits, which are always popular. We've had a Parkview Wellness Coach in the past, and the, the usage from staff was really low, and we were paying quite a lot for that. So we still used our Wellness Coach in the first quarter, but then used the rest of those funds for the Headspace app. So Headspace is a meditation app, but they have four different focus for staff, and we were able to offer that for all staff, part-time and full-time. Get a free subscription as long as they're employed here.
Can you explain that again? I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. It has four focus areas, so meditation, focus, movement, and sleep. And we've done challenges every month, so this month is mindful eating, but we've done water challenges and meditation challenges to increase participation in that, that app, and we've seen a lot of usage in it, and it's been very popular. So we were able to use the same ones from the Parkview Coach to, Susan's going to show you on her, to go towards that Headspace app.
I'm meditating.
Yeah. There's, there can be short sessions, long sessions, it can be movement. It's been very popular, so. We still use Parkview, they're still a great partner for our wellness screenings in January and November. We had 155 staff participate in January and 12 in November. That benefit totaled over 4,000 for staff. We offered the flu shot through Parkview and Super Shots this fall. 96 staff participated for a benefit of over $2,600. And then we continue to offer and receive a lot of participation with our wellness bonus for staff. Those are for staff full-time that are in our benefit plans, but you can choose, you get points for, for different things. So if you get your dental exam every year, you get a point. If you get your COVID booster, you get a point. And 178 staff participated last year, totaling 77,000. We also have a gym membership for full-time staff. Seven employees participated last year, reimbursing them up to $2,600, $2,600 total in January 2022. Any questions about wellness or, or benefit offerings for next year?
Any questions or comments? Sounds like things are well in hand.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to compensation. So as you all know, we conducted a salary study this summer using JER HR Group. They looked at each job position and compared with national and comparable libraries across the U.S., along with market data from Bureau of Labor Statistics, and comp data for other nonprofit and government agencies in Fort Wayne. So using all of that data, along with factoring in years of service for our staff, we created our 2023 compensation proposal. So the total compensation proposal, and I'll break it down, the total compensation proposal is about 1.4 million, which is within what Dave had budgeted. The first part of the proposal is a 5% COLA increase for staff effective the first pay period of 2023. Any staff that would be above that pay grade, the maximum of their pay grade, would receive a lump sum payment paid quarterly like we did last year. If this gets approved, that would be six employees affected that would be above their pay grade. So the total cost for the 5% COLA increase for staff is $588,990. The second part of our proposal, which I think is broken out into a different agenda item, but second part of our proposal is to increase our pay grades 2%, as recommended by Sherem and our consultant to assist with recruitment needs. You have the current and the proposed pay grades in your packet as well. And to go along with that, which is another agenda item, is an amendment to our pay administration policy. We talked about in the last FNP, I think Paul had recommended that, to come with a proposal for a policy change to allow us to upgrade the pay grades up to 2% each year, or taking an average five-year COLA increase by Social Security Administration to, to determine those, so we don't have to come to you every year with that. It would still get approval by the board, but we have that coming later in the agenda. And the third and final part of our proposal is to adjust individuals' pay to account for their years of service at ACPL. This factor hadn't been included in past surveys and would allow us to correct some of that salary compression that we face right now. Some of these adjustments would be COLA increases. If somebody was going to get the 5% COLA increase, we adjusted for the expected change in premium, so that somebody wouldn't be below that COLA amount. But the total amount for our adjustment to years of service at ACPL is $864,655. So we're able to achieve those adjustments calculated by using the cost of living, the years of service, and the market data to keep the whole proposal at 1.4 million, which is within what Dave had budgeted.
Have we been experiencing any abnormal resignations?
What do you mean by abnormal?
Well, you read the paper today, people are moving from one place to another, quitting and not doing anything.
Quiet quitting.
Yeah.
Yeah. We haven't experienced anything abnormal. I would say quiet quitting has probably happened before the pandemic as well, it just has a new name, but nothing abnormal. I mean, we, we look at exit survey data, and that really drives a lot of our, our decisions and what we need to correct, but nothing out of the normal.
What about our turnover?
The turnover rate?
Yeah.
This last quarter, it was 3.5% in the first quarter, 7.7% in the second quarter, and 9.7% in the third quarter. And I don't have the fourth quarter data yet. So it's tracking a little bit less than last year.
A little bit less than last year.
Yeah.
Any other questions, observations, or comments?
I think that we just, you know, to your point, we've had two finance and personnel meetings around this to have conversations, and obviously, those are open for people to come as well, but it's a, we've had some pretty rich conversation in those about what's the right way to approach, especially the disparities that we're kind of seeing in some of the ranges and things along those lines. And so I think that, you know, it's, it's hard every year we get here, and it's, it's range adjustments and increases and things, and it always feels like we're playing catch-up. And I think that this year, with some of the systematic approaches that we're talking about doing, and I think that's one thing that I know we're going to talk about in another agenda item, is maybe adjusting how we can make this more automated every year, so we're not having such drastic swings, I guess, in what we have to do to bring people up to par, if I want to say it that way. So I'm, I'm happy to be, you know, to this spot, and I'm hoping that as we move forward that we'll, we'll have less and less of that. But I'm more excited, I guess, that we're putting some things in place that recognize the experience that people bring to the table, especially for those who have been here for a long time. And I know that you've advocated for them a lot in our meetings to say that, you know, we've, we've got to recognize the years of experience that people bring, but that also, as we're bringing new people in, it doesn't mean that people are, you know, if they come with 10 years' experience, they have 10 years' experience, and that only adds to the value that they bring to, to being an employee here and a part of the team. So I think that, you know, I'm excited to see the adjustments that we're making, and it's, it's pretty robust. I guess if I want to say it that way, as we're looking at approving this, you know, to your point, 1.4 million, we're afforded that opportunity because of the, the growth quotient we see in our budget each year and things along those lines, but that's still a significant, significant increase in the various areas that we're looking at doing. And, you know, it's not without a lot of study and a lot of conversations in our, in our subcommittee meetings to discuss all this. So I just kind of felt like I wanted to say, say some things to that.
Thank you.
Excellent point. Well, that, any, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2023 Compensation and Benefit Program as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just do want to point out, the 5% certainly is a generous number, but it's offset, obviously. And we had these discussions at the committee meetings about the increase out of pocket for the healthcare benefit. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. And it's in concert with other public agencies.
Correct, yeah.
All right. No other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That passes. Thank you. Lorraine, you want to address the resolution change?
So the next piece, and I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda on me, is the next piece, the pay grades? Pay structure policy.
Pay structure policy.
So we have the... Resolution, yes, for the pay structure. Thank you, Pete. I have the pay administration policy, a portion of it, it's, it's a long policy, but I have it in your packet with the, the proposed changes that would allow us to adjust pay grades 2% each year, or taking the, the five-year COLA average from Social Security Administration, whichever is larger. Those would still, I assume, go to you all, so that you are aware that we're making those changes, but at least let's us make some pay grade changes, some pay grade changes without having to wait to the, to get approval every time. So I've got this, changing the pay structure policy here, again, talking about the 2% or the average COLA over the last five years by Social Security Administration. And we'll entertain any questions.
Any questions?
I think, do you, do you know what the average COLA the last five years is?
I don't have it on me, but no. Easy to...
I was just wondering how far away that was from the 2%. I guess that was really my question, to try to understand that. But to your point, I mean, none of these, this doesn't automatically approve this, that all this still comes back to us in, in the annual approval, but I just wondered if you had that, so.
Yeah.
And this, I believe, I guess I, what I was referring to earlier is when we're saying, put, let's put some systematic changes in place that allow you some latitude to already program for the next year what that increase could be and the ranges. Hopefully, we aren't making a big sweeping change in the ranges like we had to do this year again.
Yeah, agreed.
On some of that. So I think that's the goal, to just try to get to a cost of living increase each year.
Mm-hmm.
That's the whole point behind this, this change, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments? We're referring to the red line. Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the resolution, to approve the pay structure policy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Okay.
Time for the resolution to approve the pay structure.
Right.
So the, the 2022 pay structure you have is this year, obviously, the 2023 is an increase by 2% to use for 2023.
That refers to these documents.
So just, just to be clear, we approved number eight, and we're going back to number seven?
Right. Yeah. I thought I'd see if you're awake.
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Now we're at item nine.
The change to the staffing tables, correct. The last piece, then, you don't have to hear from me. So we have a vacancy in our finance department, a soon-to-be vacancy, with the accounting technician position, which is currently an A3. This position is the primary person involved with payroll and AP for the organization as a whole. So that department, the financial services manager, came to me and asked if we could adjust that title from accounting technician to payroll and accounting specialist. That way, it's, it's, more accurately reflects the role and responsibility, in addition to moving them from an A3 to an A4 pay grade.
That refers to...
Correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second, and then we can discuss?
So moved.
Thank you, Gloria. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Hearing, seeing, no discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And we have a new job description.
And I love you all.
What'd he say?
Since they work for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you, Lorraine. Okay, Susan, you're up.
We got through a lot of meat in 23 minutes, but there was a lot of committee work and research done to prepare for that. So thank you, Lorraine. Thank you all. Okay, I've got a prop. I should have prepared the AV crew for this, I'm sorry. So our library-at-home staff held their very first Great Day Cafe at the main library on November 9th in partnership with Aging and Home Services. Adults with memory impairments and their caregivers were invited to enjoy music and activities that enrich the mind, body, and spirit in a welcoming and supportive environment, and I attended, and it was lovely. Another thing that was introduced at this event was circulating memory kits, of which I have one right here, and John Frankie from our library-at-home program is here. Wave, John. This was his brainchild. So we have, can you remind me, John, how many of these we have right now circulating?
We have five circulating.
Five. And they are on different themes. This one in particular is on gardening. So it's a tool for people with memory loss or cognitive impairment to use with their caregivers, designed with the goal of prompting conversation and remembering. So with the gardening one, we have a little instruction sheet with question prompts. We can pass that around. And then, I don't, it's beautifully packaged, I don't want to mess it up, but I guess I'm going to a little bit. We've got some flowers. We have some flashcards with lovely pictures. We have, this is fun, we have gardening gloves. We have, I'm embarrassed, because I'm not a gardener, what is?
Drow.
Thank you, a drow. So we have all of these props to sort of be a catalyst for conversations, and there's even scents elements in here as well. I believe there's something that smells like a garden. Our one that is on the beach has a candle, I believe, that smells like the seashore and the beach. We are really, really excited about launching these. We're planning more, and I want to thank John and his team for being a champion of this and putting this together for our patrons.
How are they made available?
They are made available in the catalog, like you would check out a book or a DVD, you can put a hold on them. So yeah, they just function like any other library material you can check out.
And we have five kits?
Right now, we have five, and there are plans to grow the collection to more.
That's pretty cool.
How many topics would that cover?
So right now, we have, I may have Jonathan help me up, we have gardening, camping, baseball, the beach.
No pressure, right?
No, I didn't know.
And another one.
The farm.
The farm, the farm. Thank you, John.
Get her that memory cat.
And is this unique, something that was created internally? Is this done at other libraries, or...
I think some libraries are doing it, but it's still a fairly new program and resource out in public libraries, and John was inspired to bring it here to Allen County.
Sounds great.
Mm-hmm. And we have these lovely bags. So feel free to take a look at that later.
That's terrific.
Yes.
Be interested in knowing the success of the program.
Absolutely.
If we could have a report.
Absolutely. And I believe a press release just went out, was that today, Ayesha, or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, to the media about these kits. So that should spur interest as well.
Good.
So speaking of new things, to Allen County Public Library, we had our very first Artisans and Innovators Expo last Saturday. It was billed as a way to meet Fort Wayne's best upcoming entrepreneurs, and small business startups and artisans displayed their wares and services in the Great Hall. And I attended, and we had the first, they had the snow that day, so I think that maybe hindered attendance a little, but it was still very successful, and lots of neat things for sale. This is, in some ways, a small thing, but I think it's significant of a bigger partnership. I've been in communication with CityLink, our public transportation company, and at our request, they now include on their website a list of all ACPL libraries in its ridership area and the bus routes that access them. And we have also now added that to our website, so it's just another way to make sure people know how to get to us. And CityLink already had it for the parks, and when I asked if we could be included, they had it done within 24 hours. So we want to thank them for that. Some good news for our friends of the Lincoln Collection, they were awarded $53,075 in City of Fort Wayne ARPA American Rescue Plan Act tourism funds. This grant will support the ongoing work and outreach of the Rowland Center for Lincoln Research, so congratulations to them. And in other Lincoln Collection news, thanks to financial support from the Friends of the Lincoln Collection, I, along with our senior Lincoln librarian, Cara Gustafson, will be attending the National Council for Social Studies Conference in Philadelphia, December 2nd through 4th. And we will staff an exhibit booth at the conference promoting the Rowland Center and the Lincoln Collection to an estimated attendance of 3,000 social studies educators. We just had staff come back, yesterday actually, from the Indiana Library Federation Conference in Indianapolis, and our staff was well represented in the speaker lineup, including presentations from Kim Bowlin, whose presentation was so popular that afterward, she was approached by our friends at Indianapolis Public Library, asking if she would do a presentation for them. So that was a big hit. Kurt Witcher also presented on the Rowland Center, and Rebecca Wolf from our Graybel branch presented on the programming she does for adults with intellectual and learning disabilities. And I heard all were quite well-received, so thank you to our staff for representing us so well. And speaking of representing us well, Beth Boatwright is not here today. She is currently in Washington, DC.
currently in Washington, D.C., representing us at the Urban Library Council's Annual Forum. I was elected as an officer on the Executive Board for Visit Fort Wayne, beginning in 2023. Very happy to serve. And also in your packet, you will see a document from Library Journal. It is the Public Libraries' Fines and Fees Survey Report for 2022. And I included that because we do hope to bring to the December meeting a proposal to go fine-free for all of our patrons. As you know, last December, you approved to go fine-free for minors. And I think this report will be very helpful as you consider the proposal that will be coming to you in the future weeks. One thing that I found really interesting, according to this report, the percentage of U.S. libraries charging fines has decreased from 92% to 36% over the last five years. So if there are any questions or things you want me to definitely bring to the table next December when it comes to our fine-free proposal, please let me know. You can let me know now, or shoot me an email, or give me a phone call, because we want to make sure that we have the information you need to make the decision. We're happy to answer any questions about that.
May I piggyback on your present, your proposal?
Of course, of course.
We all know Carnegie, uh, Mr. Carnegie, and he was very instrumental in, in building the Carnegie libraries. And he did that because as a young person, but before he became as well-known and as well-wealthy, he was an avid reader and attendee of libraries. And one time, he got a notice that he had an overdue library book or books, and this really appalled him. He felt that books should be available to everyone regardless of having the funds to pay for a fine or not was not the issue. That books should be available. And that's what precipitated him to begin thinking about Carnegie libraries. So I was reminded of that. And I hope we really take a look at this with not only our minds and our fiscal ideas, but with our heart.
Good point. What has been the impact on the weighting of minors' minds? Have we seen much activity?
I will have specifics next month, but we have seen a very dramatic increase in the circulation of youth materials. And I have had conversations with our youth services purchaser, the person who selects all the books for youth, and I've asked if she's seen an uptick in the amount of replacements she had to buy because of this. And she said she is more likely to need to buy a replacement because a book got popular on TikTok versus a book that never came back.
Any questions or comments of Susan? I'm glad this bag was for library at home. I thought you were leaving.
No, you're stuck with me for a while, babe.
A pleasant thought. Okay, under new business, strategic planning preview.
Yes, I wanted to give you a heads up. So our current strategic plan does sunset at the end of 2022, and it's served us very well. According to the Indiana State Library, we do need to have a new strategic plan in place by the end of 2023. So ultimately, that would mean that this board would need to approve that plan, and then we would submit it to the state. We have a lot of things on our side right now. For one, our strategic plan consultant from the last iteration is sitting right there in the corner of the room, Kim Bowlen, who now works for us. So what an amazing asset to have her as part of our team. Also, the facility master plan process that we've had over the past year and a half, that has allowed us to collect an incredible amount of data and public engagement that can be used to shape a new iteration of the strategic plan. What we are working on now, we think a piece that could be more robust, is a strategic plan on how to better serve our multicultural, diverse population. So we have been in communication with a consultant, a local consultant who specializes in doing just that, planning services and engaging with a multicultural community. So we're in the early stages of that. She is going to be presenting a proposal to us in the coming weeks that we will be discussing with you to see if we can possibly use her services as we move forward in the next iteration of our plan.
Questions? Time now for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? If you could just give us your name, your address, and your topic.
Hello, is this working?
That's working.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Ann Dole. My address is 1611 Waxwing Court, Fort Wayne, Indiana, 46814. I'm a member of the community. I own property, a house, and I pay property taxes, and I vote. I even serve on the HOA Board of Directors in my community. I'm also an employee here at the library. I work in the Genealogy Center as a part-time shover. Since your topic today was about our pay rates, I wanted to speak about that topic. My current pay rate is $10.40 an hour. With your 5% increase, I will make $10.92 an hour. It's not a big increase for me. I understand it is generous across the board, but at the lowest rates, it doesn't make a big difference. You asked about turnover. I've worked here for 10 and a half months now, one of the new shovers. But there's only one shover that's been there longer than me, and she's been there for 18 years. I've seen seven shovers leave the, the organization in the last 10 and a half months. A big part of my job is helping to train the new shovers, and that takes a lot of time. We've seen several shovers leave after, not even finishing their training. It takes, in my experience, about three or four months at least to fully train a new shover. So I want you to be aware of that as you're making these decisions. The genealogy department is so important to me. I started doing research there before I even moved here. And it's my goal to become a professional genealogist, and I'll be very dependent on the genealogy center. I know you compare our pay rates to other libraries, but there's no other library in the country that has a genealogy center like we do. And it brings so much to this community that I think it deserves an exception for the staff that work so hard to do a lot more than just shelving. So I ask you humbly, respectfully, to please consider us when you're making pay increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address us? How about you two? Nobody? If there's anyone that has good and welfare, well, we have good and welfare. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, by nay? We are adjourned. I remind the board we have a new executive session. Thank you.